Good evening and thank you for joining us for our special board of directors meeting this evening. If you'll please rise and join me with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you again for attending and joining us this rainy, cold evening.
You're welcome.
Thanks Todd. You have to be here. Alright, first order of business is to adopt our agenda. Does he get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then next on our agenda is special recognition, and it happens to be school board appreciation month.
Yay!
So it's about, yeah, it's about us tonight, right? And I'm loving all of the posters. It's one of our favorite nights because, not because it's school board appreciation month, but because all of the students take their time and make the posters for us and decorate the boardroom. It's really fun to see all the creativity that goes along with making these and knowing that our students are doing what they're doing and appreciating us. So I'll turn this over to superintendent Stich.
So I just want to start by saying, first, on behalf of the community, thanking you for all the time and dedicated service that you provide to the district. Being a school board member is often not a glamorous role. You get all of the blame and very little of the credit. And it's nice, at least once a year, to pause, take a few moments, and say thank you for the many hours that you put in and the dedicated service, because I know, I've been able to work with each of you for quite some time, and I know how you always have the students' best interest at their heart and in your mind when making decisions. And every question that you ask, everything that you do is all about the kids in this community and making sure that they have every possible opportunity. Whether people like it or not, you make tough decisions and you make them for the benefit of our students. So one of the things that you've done over the years is help protect our music program. So we thought it would be very nice to be able to share some of the wonderful music that our students are able to perform based on the decisions that you have historically made to protect those programs and invest in the arts within Evergreen. So I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Ormson now.
So I just would like to introduce, well, first, I'd just say thank you for what Dr. Stich said and say thank you for your support of the fine arts programs in the district. And I'd like to introduce the Mountain View Brass Quintet and one of their directors, Mark Hossen. He's going to tell you a little bit about what they do and the program of Mountain View.
Thank you. So this is the Mountain View High School Brass Quintet, and this is one of approximately 90 student-led ensembles that we have at Mountain View. And they all rehearse outside on school day. And the other thing that makes them really unique is that it's very little director input. They choose their own music, they create their own ensembles, rehearse and perform all on their own, using the skills that they've gotten from in their normal classes. This group is especially special because it was invited to perform at the Northwest Music Educators Conference this coming February, which is quite the honor for a high school group. These students also participate in all, of course, their core classes, which you guys have time and time again wanted to protect and help grow, such as wind ensemble and jazz band. And they're going to be headed to a doubleheader basketball game right after this performance tonight. But all in all, we'd like to dedicate this performance to the board with special thanks to Todd Usuria for his years of support and service to the Evergreen School District and its students. This is the Mountain View High School Brass Quintet, and they're performing "Scerzo" by John Chino.
That was great. I really enjoyed that. How long have you all been playing?
I've been playing since, or our group or individually?
Individually, I guess. Like, did you all start in fifth grade?
Yeah, I started in fifth grade.
Yeah. Oh, so you started in band in fifth grade, yeah. Is your favorite subject is band?
Mine most definitely.
Is Mr. Hossen your favorite teacher? Yeah, that was wonderful. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you for joining us. Have fun at the basketball game.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming here.
Go Thunder, break here.
Go Thunder.
Mark, did you say 90 groups?
Yeah, approximately. From year to year, it changes a little bit, but usually at least 90, sometimes up to 120.
Does that include the choirs or just band?
No, just instrumental. So that would include orchestra and band.
Gotcha. That's a lot.
And then they go and play a solo ensemble, their local solo ensemble in different places.
Yeah, go Thunder. It's a bigger program.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was great.
Alright, thank you. That was really nice. We always love it when students come and perform for our school board meetings. It's one of our favorite things to see students in action at our school board meetings. And I know Todd really loves any type of music performance, as we all do, but if you didn't know, Todd plays the trumpet himself. And he does performances at many of our elementary schools.
Yep. So yeah, it was real special to be able to hear those kids play, especially because it sounds like they all started in band through the district in fifth grade, so that's pretty neat.
Okay, next on our agenda, board consent agenda. Will entertain a motion?
Then that we accept the board consent agenda.
Second?
I think Todd has something to say.
I think that's the superintendent consent agenda.
Okay.
Alright, so it's going to move to second. And all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next is the superintendent consent agenda.
And...let's see, where's the number? Yeah, I guess due to a remote interest in Microsoft stock, I need to recuse myself from accounts payable warrant voucher 1101-810188.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, with all the excitement of school board appreciation month, we forgot to excuse Ginny Gronwal from the meeting. She's traveling and unable to attend tonight, so we can have a motion for that as well.
I move to excuse Director Gronwal from tonight's board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that oversight. Alright, so next is matters reserved for board action. First is...is that right?
Secret to board.
Oh, I'm having issues with my mouse, so I can't scroll. Okay, superintendent report. Superintendent Stich?
Okay, probably the biggest item I have to report is the response that our school district has had to the recent measles outbreak. As the board and most of the community know, we've had three elementary schools and Evergreen High School now impacted with exclusion orders. I want to start off by really commending our human resource staff who was in yesterday pretty much all day. We worked hard to Sunday the week before they came in early. They've been putting in amazing hours, having to pull individual staff files by hand and search for immunization records and figure out who can stay in the schools and who has to be excluded. And it's been just a tremendous effort to try to stay on top of what's been happening with the schools. And it's, I just really want to commend them for all the work that they've been doing. Additionally, our transportation department's been doing everything they can to make sure that we have all of their staff immunization records in place for the ones and checking up on drivers that may have been exposed. And probably above all, I want to commend Holly Long for the way she has handled this as the supervisor of all the nurses in the district. I was on the phone with Dr. Melnick yesterday, working out some details, and he gave her his highest level of praise and said he has never worked with anybody so efficient and so dedicated at making sure that we protect the students in a school, in any school district. So right out of the mouths of the main doctor for the county health department in the midst of this outbreak, he commended everything that the Evergreen School District is doing. And I just want to pass on my thank you to all the staff and all the work that they've been doing to make sure that we're following every rule that we're given and responding to this in the most, the safest way possible.
So just a question on that, because there's actually been people in the community that have been asking, if you haven't had the immunization, then you have to stay away? You're excluded, right?
Well, it's an interesting terminology. When we're told we have to exclude people, it's because if you haven't been immunized and you were exposed to somebody during their contagious period, you have a 90% chance that you have contracted the measles, but you may not show symptoms for up to three weeks. And you are contagious prior to the time that you showed symptoms. Therefore, what we're being told is those people who we think were exposed, technically, we are excluding them as a school district, but the health department would advise them to basically stay home and quarantine themselves and not be out in public because they could expose the rest of the public.
So being exposed means that they were at one of those target sites that we've seen, not only within the schools, but also with other places in the community?
Right. So anybody who was at the Trail Blazers game on the 11th should technically stay home for the next three weeks and not go out in public and expose anyone unless they had their immunizations up to date. But as the county told me on the phone, the first conversation I had, it's not like they're going to send the county sheriff to anybody's house to make sure they're staying at home, but for anybody who is not immunized, who has been exposed, they're putting the public further at risk by going out in public. So every time we have a new case that they confirm, they have to go to that individual, find out where is everywhere that you have been during your contagious period, and then they post all of those locations, like Ikea, like, what was the other one? The Costco in North Portland. All of those locations now become potential exposure sites. You know, we did get a clarification with our bus drivers, and we were able, because Holly Long is able to access that, to be able to go through and verify which routes, if any, we even had any exposure, potential exposures on. And to date, there was only one bus route that we're aware of, and the driver on that route was old enough to not, to have verified that they have immunizations. So we haven't had to exclude any drivers as of today with the newest clarification. But we're in regular communication with county health. They give us typically a short heads up before they make it public, prior to them confirming, even when they get an idea that it's going to be coming, they try to give us advance notice so we can start, the HR department can start working on records and figuring out exactly who can still show up at school and who may have to stay home. And those of us who are still, there's a lot of us still scrambling to get immunization records. I myself had to do the blood draw last Friday and should get my results tomorrow to find out whether I'm able to go out into some of the schools or whether I still have to stay away.
So if there's a doubt, we should not try to go to those poor schools until we've got some more certainty?
Correct.
I was going through my own immunization records. Probably need a booster.
This is a great time for everybody in the community to get all of their immunization records up to date and turn them into your appropriate HR department. Other things, on the superintendent report, we did have our faith-based breakfast last Wednesday. I thought it was a great event again to be able to bring together leaders from the school community and our religious community to work together hand in hand for the betterment of our entire community and for our kids. Also, last week, I got to go to the National Football Foundation banquet where Rory Rosenbach was recognized as the coach of the year for the southwest Washington area. And this Thursday, we're going to be having general contractor interviews for Mountain View replacement project, Mountain View High School project. So I'll be tied up in those interviews all morning, and hopefully we'll select our general contractor with the GCCM process that we're following on that because it's a more complex project. And the last thing I had to share with the board is on January 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, I believe it's here in the Evergreen Room, Alicia Topper and Pete Van Norwick are going to be holding kind of an open public workshop on what's happening with your taxes for community members to come in and find out from our treasurer and our county assessor exactly what's happening with property taxes locally. So if they want information about the impact of our proposed levies, that's from the actual treasurer and assessor, you can get it directly from them here on the 30th.
I've heard Alicia gives that presentation, and she does a great job.
And board members are welcome to attend too, but if there's going to be, if you're going to attend, let Elizabeth know so we can make sure we advertise it as a meeting if we have three of you.
So when and where, again, is that?
January 30th from 2:00 to 4:00 here in the Evergreen Room.
Alright, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Alright, next is monitoring district operations, and we will start with operational expectation OE7 asset protection monitoring report. John?
So two weeks ago, I presented this report to the board. After the original presentation and workshop, went over this in detail. Haven't yet received any comments from the public staff or the board relative to this policy or this monitoring report. There are three areas that I did notice that we did not provide a specific contractor listing, and because of that, we're proposing a change to the interpretation on a different way of measuring our contractor insurance liability coverage for those working in the district. Also, section 7.4, working to improve our data backup systems. And then on 7.7, the area that we weren't in full compliance was we had anticipated getting a letter from the county that our investments were meeting the board's legal expectations. And the county did not want to provide that, but instead provided documentation to their website to be included. So based on that, at this time, I recommend the board accepts the monitoring report for OE7, the asset protection as presented for second reading and in compliance with noted exceptions.
Alright, thank you. So at this time, we'll ask for audience questions and comments, and if you have a comment, if you could come to the podium. Alright, so seeing none, we will call for a motion?
Recommend the board accept the monitoring report for operational expectation OE7 as presented for second reading as in compliance with noted exceptions.
I second that.
Great. Now we'll go ahead and open it up to the board to ask questions.
I just wanted to reiterate the answer to the question you gave me last time about the data storage exception, in that the risk that we're facing is, in the event of a very large catastrophe, and that we do have offsite backups, and the most we risk is a couple of days of downtime to bring that data back onsite with no equipment. Okay.
Correct. Derek's nodding yes in the back.
Alright, any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I mean, it is exactly the same as what we presented, or you presented two weeks ago.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll now take a vote to accept the monitoring report for OE7 asset protection as presented for second reading as in compliance with noted exceptions. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Alright, operational expectation OE7 asset protection monitoring has been approved and is in compliance with noted exceptions. So next, we'll move to asset protection interpretation and indicators.
So as I mentioned on the last item on the monitoring report, there was a couple things that we had anticipated when we originally wrote our interpretation that we could provide as evidence, the contractor listing and the letter from the county, based on not, on the information that we have today, on ways that we can show that with less work and also without having to get the letter from the county, that we've submitted and a revised interpretation and indicator for next year, so that those two sections would be in compliance based on the data that we presented this year, without exception. So based upon that, and I haven't heard any comments from the community or staff or the board since I presented this two weeks ago for first reading, so at this time, I recommend the board accepts the revisions to OE7 asset protections on the interpretation indicator as presented for second reading and final approval.
Alright, great, thank you, John. Is there any audience questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, and we'll call for a motion?
I recommend that the board adopts revisions to OE7 asset protections as presented as a second reading and approval.
Second?
Alright, we'll go ahead and open it up to the board to ask questions.
Yeah, looks good to me. I don't have any questions.
Alright, well, if we don't have any questions, then we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great. Move forward. Alright, now the one that I keep skipping my computer to, because I must really want to get to it, is the policy about director districts, policy 1105. And this one is also a second reading. I'm going to do this over to you, John.
So this is a Losda recommended policy change, and because it deals with defining directorate districts, this is one of the policies that the board retained authority over. We brought this forward in workshop and first reading two weeks ago, and it adds non-discrimination statements to, that are mandatory now as a result of the Washington Voting Rights Act. So it doesn't actually change the process, other than we need to make, the board would need to make sure if you do change directorate districts, that you would monitor that those changes would not exacerbate any demographic or ethnical disparities between districts. So based upon that, and I've received no comments on this policy change, so at this time, I recommend the board adopts the revisions to board policy 1105, director districts.
Great, thank you. So we'll call on the audience for questions or comments? We'll call for a motion from the board?
I move for adoption of policy 1105, director districts.
Second?
Alright, questions or comments from the board? It just sounds like we're in compliance with the language that's recommended by Losda, so it makes sense to move it forward to me. Any other questions or comments? Alright, then we'll go ahead and ask for a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it's been adopted. Alright, next one is instructional materials committee citizen applications. On this one, we were given six applications for the board to review and determine of the six, which three we want to move, there was three openings, correct, John?
Yes.
Three openings that we wanted to move forward to join the instructional material committee. So we're going to take a vote. Each vote is independent for each director. We're going to vote for three. We're going to turn our ballots. Make sure that you put your name on these. Once we vote for the top three, we're going to give our ballots to Superintendent Stich. He's going to tally them up, and then the top three vote getters will be joining the instructional materials committee. Okay?
I guess one comment I had, so I was really happy to see six candidates, six applications, because in some ways, I think it was sort of hard, at least for me, to choose which three to vote for. And so I was happy to see such a good, you know, applicant pool.
Yeah, we had good people come by.
So in the event of a tie, after the tallying up, then we might have to already vote, but we'll cross that bridge and we come to it.
I'm sure I got the right ones. It's killing me too.
Okay, take your time.
That wrongs.
We're all still voting.
Do we need to do a roll call for this one too, or is it?
I remember that the process included candidate one had X votes, candidate two had Y.
For which director voted. We have them just numbered, not by name, and then after they've been voted on, then we'll announce the names.
So we, you did this in one ballot?
Really? Wow.
So I actually, I have the cross-reference on the names. So with a unanimous selection with four votes is Christina Kennington, who is candidate number one. Tied for second with three votes each, were candidate number two, Sarah Wokal, and candidate number six, which would be Adra Zimberian.
Great.
And then candidate number three got two votes, while five did not get any.
Okay, good. So they've been voted on, so now is there a process then to contact those folks and get them started and?
Yep, we will follow up.
We will pick her.
Did you name candidate number three?
No.
No, I did not.
Okay.
I don't know if they wanted me to name the person by name. I was trying, I was avoiding doing that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the Good News Report, another one of our favorites. Gail Spohler with all the good news in the district.
Yes, it's nice, since it's kind of a weekend of not as good news.
I should also recognize Gail for all the time she's put in, sending emails, answering phone calls, I'm sorry, that was an oversight on my part.
Yes, ask Mamme Zell's question, I probably. Wanted to call attention to the photo, and if you haven't had a chance to see the video on our Facebook or YouTube channel, the Union Robotics Team has been rather busy. Always a favorite of ours is the Techy Boot Camp, and last week, they were at Touchmark at Fairway Village, helping with technology questions for the residents there. However, they also are an award-winning robotics team. They won the inaugural first tech challenge, Watts Interleague Robotics Competition, with an undefeated 9-0 record, and they also won the Inspire Award, given to the team that demonstrates all of the first principles through their engineering notebook. Now, if you'd like a little more explanation, I would defer to School Board Director Rob Perkins, but can explain all of that. But it's very impressive, very impressive accomplishments.
Would you like me to explain it now, later, or not at all?
Let's take a vote.
I'll just zoom on through the good news. Mountain View High School Band Program, and you saw a small portion of that band here, so you can understand why they won a $3,000 grant from IQ Credit Union, and I know if Jenny was here, she would also be very appreciative of that effort as well. The York Elementary School Star Squad took first place in the core values at the first LEGO Robotics Tournament, so those are soon, you know, upcoming Union Robotics potential members as well.
That's true.
Looking to the next page, as you're following along. This is, we're continuing in with all of the work that our schools have done over the holidays, and so I wanted to recognize that our schools are also the recipient of some of the work that's been done in the community. Furcrest Columbia Credit Union donated $250, thank you Julie and Company. The Furcrest Neighborhood Association, Margaret, raised $800 and donated to Furcrest, and then Evergreen Memorial Gardens led a food drive, and a nearby self-storage unit donated $300. So that certainly helped the Furcrest families make a brighter holiday season. We have one nominee that was selected by Superintendent Chris Reifdal, Philip Ming from Union High School. He was nominated by Superintendent Reifdal to move forward as a semifinalist in the United States Presidential Scholar Program. It's a program that recognizes the nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Fairway Village residents collected and donated coats, hats, and other clothing for Millplain, Hearthwood, and Endeavor Elementaries. Some of U Church collected 20 holiday turkeys and food boxes for Pacific Middle School. Then the Family and Community Resource Centers, in partnership with many, many of our faith-based partners that you met last week, provided 365 holiday food boxes for families throughout the district. Meanwhile, the Mountain View Boys Basketball Team passed out hats, blankets, sleeping bags, scarves, sack lunches, hand warmers, and other items to individuals who need over the holiday season as part of their service project. While the Pacific Middle School group ran a canned food drive and collected 2,700 pounds of food that they donated, among other groups, to the Santa's Posse, as well as the Cascade Middle School, National Junior Honor Society also teamed up to support the Santa's Posse and help deliver some of those food boxes with the food that was collected by some of our other schools, and wrap gifts for 1,000 families throughout Clark County. This is the little overview of good news, and be sure and read the rest of it, lots of good things going on in the schools.
Great, thank you, Gail. All right, our other favorite part of our meeting is the budget update. We'll call up Chief Operations Officer Mike Berlino for that.
Thank you, appreciate that. I would just like to lead with the news, I'm not sure if everybody on the board realizes that Edgar Martinez was elected to the Hall of Fame.
Seriously?
Today.
That's great news.
Monumental for the state of Washington.
Wow.
Now to the budget. You've got two documents, they're the first time we've shared them with you this year. The first document is a financial indicator document that we've used for a number of years, it looks at the enrollment, the figures that we use for budget, and then what are the numbers as compared to that. At the top, you can see elementary, middle, and high school. Elementary is tracking higher than what we had budgeted, which is a positive trend compared to last year, where we were quite a ways under what we had budgeted. The middle, at this point in time, is actually right on what we had budgeted in terms of estimates, and then at high school, we're a little below. So overall, we're about 60 kids ahead of what we had budgeted in our estimates right now. Honestly, the numbers in terms of the budget enrollment are really pretty good. I mean, we're a little bit under in the ALE programs, but pretty much everything, you're talking double digits for the most part out of thousands of kids, is really pretty good. So typically, that would be a pretty good indicator of things as we are looking at the year. You can also see then down at the bottom, using our current formulas for staffing, which are primarily driven by contractual language in terms of how many staff we would have at any particular level. With respect to our staffing numbers, we're really pretty close to what we had allocated also. Within the basic ed, we allocated right around 1,223 positions, and we're right around 1,219. So typically, that's what we've seen for a number of years, that we're pretty close to what we had allocated, and that's again, usually a really good indicator for us when we're looking at how does the actual, how does it look like things are going to go for the year. Special ed, both of the items at the bottom, we're almost right on in terms of what we had budgeted and what the staffing looks like for the current year. So the first document, I think paints a pretty good picture from the perspective of where we're at and what we think this year might look like. Then the second document that I have is what we've also shared for a number of years, and this is kind of where I, throughout the year, dig deeper into individual programs and look at those programs and make estimates for basic ed, for special ed, for CTE, every program we have, kind of go through, what do I think we're going to spend in the current year in these programs, and do the same thing for revenue. So the enrollment that you saw on the first page drives enrollment figures, the levy money, every revenue, every expenditure, I kind of do a detailed look at that to come up with an estimate. And you can see on the far right, where with those estimates, I'm predicting or projecting that our balance, where we start about $24.5 million roughly at the beginning of the year, ends up a little over $20 million, so that our fund balance is actually going down, and we've talked about that a little bit at some meetings we had in December, and then just we've had conversations about that issue. So the thing that stands out is typically that first sheet kind of drives how do things look, and then the second sheet kind of mirrors that, and what's, I think clearly, an indicator for us as we move forward is that while the first page looks like what we've seen in previous years, the second page doesn't. We don't typically see our balances dropping, and so it's an indicator for next year, you know, because where we're at this year, we have to look at how that's going to impact us for next year also. So I think what it means to me is, we have to look at different things, is what are the indicators of how we're doing, and where are the flashpoints we need to look at? I think of, just generally, when I think about the changing landscape of school finance, I see McCleary certainly is something that has changed what's happening. We weren't, we've talked about it often, we were not Evergreen winner in that equation, primarily because we were a district that was levying, between levy and equalization, a number that was higher than the 1,500 that we're capped at now. We bring that number down, but the money that we received from the state to kind of theoretically backfill what we were losing isn't significant enough. We were, when you look at this, either you get $1,500 a kid, or you get $2,500, or $1.50, which turns into $1,500 or $2,500. A lot of the districts that did well were the districts that were levying right at 2,500, 2,600, 2,700, and when they made that, 2,500 was the lesser of the two, so they got all the regionalization money distributed to them, and they really didn't see a reduction in their levy funds. And that's why when you look at a district like Lake Washington, which is fairly similar, maybe not demographically, but in terms of the numbers of kids, we've been talking about it for months, that's a district that generated 65 million new, we were a district that generated 6.5 million new. So we kind of, that's a huge issue for us, and I know that there's work legislatively to try to work on that, and a lot of us didn't know that Edgar would ever make it to the Hall of Fame, a lot of us probably don't believe that the legislature will ever fix that problem either. But maybe they will, could take him 10 years, it took Edgar 10. The second piece is enrollment, you know, just enrollment decline. So when you look at that first page, when enrollment drops, we actually have corresponding reductions in staffing, and so you offset some of that, but when you look at the full dollar amount of what you're losing when enrollment drops versus the expenditures that you reduce automatically, it's about half of that. So if we've lost 1,000 students over the last just two or three years, and we're getting $8,000 a student, you're talking somewhere around 8 billion bucks, we've probably taken 4 million of the staff away, but we haven't reduced the other 4 million of the enrollment drop. So enrollment's definitely an issue, and just labor costs in general. You know, when you went through the reductions that we had of the 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12, those years, which most of you were around for, if not all of you, there were a number of years where, there just basically everybody froze their pay, and then coming out of that, there still was that lagging time where the legislature wasn't driving new money yet, so there still were significant labor increases, and so what we've really seen the last three years, a lot of pressure on the district from a labor expenditure perspective across the board, not in a one particular unit, just across the board. I think those, all of those things together are what are creating kind of this situation that we're looking at right now. So it's, the first page looks great, I mean, we're managing the staff, the kids are where we thought they would be, but even with that, we still have issues that we need to, we've got to sort through and work out. Certainly, the levy is hugely important to us, both levies are hugely important to us, but we just have, we have issues that we've got to work with, and so it's not a rosy picture, but it is a picture. It is a picture. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Do you have some questions?
Thank you for answering my question via email, maybe you can talk about it a little bit.
Yeah.
I asked Mike a question about the government shutdown in Washington DC, and what impacts that might have on our revenue streams going forward if it goes on.
Right. So I haven't heard specifically about programs outside of the Food Service Program, so I have not heard, and maybe Jay could weigh in, he hasn't heard anything. So the assumption is that the money from the federal government, our three largest areas would be Title I, the Food Service Program, and IDEA. So the IDEA and the Title I, we've not heard anything in terms of impact, but what we have heard from the Food Service is that they believe they've got money to fund the Food Services Program through March. So depending on how long it lasts, we could very well face some sort of a question, I mean, it's really not a question of whether we're going to feed kids or not, we're going to feed kids, it's just something that's not already part of the equation in terms of the estimates. And if you think about March, you're talking about, what, 2/3 of the year at that point, roughly, we probably bring in 5.5 to 6 million, somewhere in that range in terms of the federal dollars, so you know, there could easily be an excess of a million. They're working together really well in Washington DC, I'm certain something's going to come up really quickly on that.
Thank you for your optimism.
Yes, yes, we have to be optimistic.
Do you have a question or question?
Yeah, I just want to understand the situation better, I realize we have issues on the revenue side and the expense side. If I look on the revenue side, that compares to the original budget of 372 million versus what maybe the estimate is for the final year of 361 now.
Right.
Is that mainly due to enrollment?
No, actually, our enrollment estimate is pretty closely tracking to what we thought, it's really more we build in some excess, expense, revenue, and expenditures. What it represents really is, when we build the budget, we always put a little extra in so we don't have to deal with a budget extension, you know, because that's one thing that we have, if we spend more than we've budgeted for, so we'll always build in some extra revenue. That's primarily what it is. What it really means is just, I think our expenditures are outpacing what we had expected them to be when we built the budget last year. Revenue really is probably tracking fairly closely. The one area that we've been the most concerned about actually, which is transportation, and we budgeted pretty aggressively in transportation, assuming we would receive the funds we believe we should receive, we've, there's been a lot of work done between Jay's, the special ed staff, and transportation. If you remember, destinations is kind of a really important thing in the formula, and we've worked to add destinations this year, and we've done that. That's added revenue. We also had some additional staff salary money that we pressured OSPI to allocate through the fund, transportation fund, and they've done that as well. So the revenue on the, in particular, the area that I was probably most concerned about was that, and I think we're actually doing quite well in that. I think the revenues are tracking what we would have expected, so we built in some extra revenue, even though it says 361 versus it's not because we don't have kids, or because it's really that we built in some extra revenue, but we also built in extra expenditures. Obviously, when we passed the budget in August, at that point, the only unknown was what was the ultimate cost going to be of the teacher salaries, and so that, and there's always other things that come up as well, and there have been this year also, but that's really what it represents more, is the expenditure side not being contained, it's not that the revenues aren't tracking.
I see. And I guess highlighting the issue is, you're projecting an unreserved fund balance of like below 5%, it looks like for the end of the year.
We have to have a conversation about the fund balance. Part of it is, is the definition of what is the fund balance, you get your unreserved, then there's some specific reserves that we have to, I think that's a conversation we probably should have at a workshop so we can get deeper into it. But if nothing were to change from the perspective of the policy, we would have a hard time of making the 5% in my mind this year because of the reserves that we have to set aside for other things.
But the 5% doesn't include the other things that are already on hold, so.
Correct. So the 5% is what it's for, I think it outlines in the policy, what the types of things that's for, but it's that there's reserves for food services that we've built up over time. When we prepay for expenditures for the following year, we have to reserve that, when we have inventory, we have to reserve, so some of those things arguably aren't true reserves, and so that kind of negatively impacts that calculation, but then there are things, like we have a reserve set aside for the skill center, we have reserves for building carryover, things like that, that all figure into that.
I would agree that probably at some point, we're going to have to really take a look at our fund balance, and decide if we have a board policy that says we're going to stay at 5%, so it's something that we need to take a look at. All right, any other questions for Mike? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is board comments, are there any comments by the school?
I love all the posters. Those are nice. I haven't seen all of them yet, but man, the kids, yeah, it's really nice, I really enjoy them.
They are really nice.
And plus, I really enjoyed having the performers here as well, I guess I was speechless, I didn't know what to say. But yeah, I really enjoyed that, it was really nice.
Nice to hear that. Trumpeters, trumpets had such a good tone. Actually, immediately thought of Miles Davis as they started to play, and I hope that gets passed back to them, because it was a beautiful performance. And that was just amazing.
And you can see their love of what they do.
It's always entertaining to listen.
I just wanted to mention the faith-based breakfast that we had last week, and I know a few of us attended. It's really amazing to see that, how that's grown over time. How many years has it been, three, four years?
That was the third district's breakfast.
It's really good to see those relationships build. They did, I think, a whole segment on just the school and relationship between the faith-based partner that they have and the things that they've been able to do for students and families in our community. And it's really, because they have like heart words group discussion at the end, and when they put their heads together and they work on the betterment of the community, it's really good things are coming from that. So it's exciting to see the work that's been done there.
I had a couple of things, just that we were at the principal birthday, first one of the year, and I was, it was always fun. I mean, it's always so interesting to hear how people view our schools and how surprised they are that school is just not the same from when they were in school. So that's always interesting to hear their input. And then I had the opportunity to meet over at LSW Architects and see the color palette for the new elementary schools, and I'm here to tell you, they looked really great.
All right.
They're really beautiful, I'm really excited with the look that the schools are going to have. I think our kids are going to be well-served with really inspiring colors.
Did it incorporate some of the school color and the?
They don't, but yet they're going to be great. They'll be fine.
Good.
It gives them opportunities to maybe think about how they're using their mascots and the colors, yeah.
So is the color scheme different for every school?
They're, they're, they can be different, they can use the colors in different ways. So they're the same, but they can be used differently. So it's, it's going to be good.
Good.
I really liked them.
That's good news.
Yeah.
I'm not going to make a 10-minute speech about First Robotics, but I thought it was worth, I was, I was at the competition where the Union team won their award, and these are kids who worked, one of the actual registered mentors for the Union team in the first organization, which hasn't meant anything this year, not a lot, maybe one question. These kids are at the apex of three years of preparation, they lost their seniors two years ago, and so they had to rebuild their team. And what I want to say about that is that in connection with that, we have a teacher who's actually on leave of absence this year, Hyke Gray, who, if she weren't on leave of absence, she'd be at Shanhala Middle School teaching teen life and a couple other developmental classes. Really neat lady, who's just poured her soul into guiding the students to organize themselves. And I think she deserves our gratitude and congratulation for the way that she's been able to foster a student-driven organization all the way to that Inspire Award. First Robotics is a big time sink, as co-curricular clubs go. It's a season that starts in September and goes all the way through March if they end up in the world championships traveling out of town. We actually approved that trip, which may or may not happen depending on what they do in state, but really impressed with the way that a competent teacher like that can teach project-based learning. And I've said it to her before, it was really inspiring. No pun intended, but it was nice. I'm aware that Pacific Middle School fields two Lego Robotics teams, and I'm just learning tonight about the York team. I don't know how many others are popping up, but the interest is clearly growing, and that really excites me. It's a great way to learn, it's really useful, I feel.
Yeah, it seems like the kids are involved with that program, are really excited about it. I mean, they just get so passionate about it. So yeah, that's, congratulations to them.
I'll pass that along the next time I see you.
Yeah, thank you too, Rob, for your work in helping guide that team, because I know that you've been involved quite a bit.
Yeah, up until this year, when the students had such a head of steam under them that they didn't really need a mentor anymore. They knew exactly what to do, they knew where to reach out and foster connections in the community, and they knew the technical stuff back to front for this. There are other mentors and volunteers, and I'm glad they're there too, because it rotates one dog close. Yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, future agenda items, is there anything that we need to add from the things that we've already talked about?
Just the fund balance discussion.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay, anything else? All right, at this time, we are going to go to recess and sign papers, and we'll reconvene right back in this room for a board workshop where we will have the Cascadia Technical Academy report to the community. We will talk about results, our four citizenship monitoring reports, we'll do a board meeting debrief, we'll have legislative updates, and then another superintendent update. Thank you.